This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for attending tonight. I respectfully call this September 25, 2017 Eau Claire School District Board Meeting to order. Our meeting is recorded by Chippewa Valley Community Television and you can also watch live from our website if you can't come here in the evening, or you can catch it also on Chippewa Valley Community Television, their channel 994. I see cookies are available tonight, so make sure you have some. They are provided by our Culinary Arts Program and a special thank you to their teacher, Laura Brooks. So, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law dictated to us by the state of Wisconsin?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Would you roll call for verification of quorum, please?
Commissioner Duax.
President.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Luganville.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Bika.
Here.
Good evening, Board. We start every meeting with a public forum. People have up until five minutes before we meet at seven o'clock to sign up. We have six or seven people signed up tonight to speak, and we're thankful that you are here. This is a time that the Board has to connect with our community, and we take this time very seriously and we offer it in great connection to our community and appreciate that. Each person who has signed up to speak has up to four minutes to address the Board. Please come up when your name is called and please state your name and your address. Also, you need to know that it isn't a time that the Board can interact with you, but know that we are listening and what you have to say is very important to us. It can't have any information or any complaints about school personality or any person, but certainly things that would affect the Board. So, the first person on our list is Amy Carlson-Sather. And you have people with you. So, can I have you introduce them, or I can say their names? Minan White, Kaylee Stoltz, and Emma Heck. Did I do well? Come on up, Amy.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Amy Carlson-Sather and I live at 2737 K Street in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I'm a teacher at North Star Middle School, 7th grade, and I'm pleased to have my former students Kaylee, Minan, and Emma with me tonight. They are passionate about making sure that all students feel valued and respected. They are concerned about the message that the celebration of Columbus Day is sending to students, both at North Star and at other schools in the Eau Claire Area School District. They met last Friday with principals at North Star, Mr. Scootley and Ms. Schieflebein, and had an extremely positive conversation with them. I want to compliment our principals for that. Kaylee, Minan, and Emma have taken the message of liberty and justice for all to heart. They were very involved in our ISMS project last year and created canvases with positive messages that advocated for the equality of all people. Their projects are beautiful and on display here at the Board Office right outside the door. Minan, Emma, and Kaylee want to continue making a difference. I am so proud of their advocacy and dedication to helping others. They would now like to share their concerns about the celebration of Columbus Day with you.
Hello, thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts about Columbus Day with you today. I'm Kaylee Stoltz and I live at 2725 Mercury Avenue, Eau Claire. And joined with me today are Emma Heck and Minan White. We are 8th graders at North Star Middle School. Last year in social studies, we studied ISMS and how stereotypes can negatively affect many people. Christopher Columbus Day celebrates Columbus discovering America, but he also did many horrible things to the Native Americans. We believe that Columbus Day should be changed to Indigenous Peoples' Day. UWEC and Madison already celebrate this holiday, and we think North Star should celebrate it too, along with the school district.
Hello, my name is Minan and I live at 5472942nd Avenue, and this school is amazing with being inclusive of all different groups of people, but little tweaks can make a huge difference. One way to make people feel more comfortable is not to honor Columbus Day. I am Ojibwe and Ho'Chuk, and I witness a very large community of people interpret Columbus Day as a mass genocide and colonization of Native Americans. Columbus practiced these, even enslaved and killed Native people. The untold story of Columbus Day will devastate, and we don't think we should celebrate someone who did those things. However, if we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, we are honoring Native people and their culture, this way strengthening and adding new knowledge about our history. This is a much more positive way to approach a controversial holiday.
Hello, my name is Emma Heck. I live at 3220 Uranus Avenue, Eau Claire, and it upsets me when my friends and others don't feel comfortable because ECASD may not be aware that people have been hurt by the celebration of Columbus Day. In 1992, there was a brave group of people that convinced the city of Berkeley, California to rename Columbus Day that is declared on October 12, Indigenous Peoples' Day, protesting the historical conquest by the Europeans to fight and call attention to the Native American people and culture through disease, massacre, and forced assimilation. Ever since the beginning of 1993, Berkeley has celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day and an annual powwow festival is set on that day. Many schools other than Berkeley, California have changed the name to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We are part of a growing group of people who represent the ones killed by Christopher In conclusion, we should celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. If we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, we know we are celebrating Native people and their culture and not Columbus when he enslaved many Native people and killed them. Many great schools and states also celebrate it. We ask and hope for this change in our school district that will make a positive impact on all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Jessica Smith.
Hi there. I'm Jessica Smith, 304 Le Mans Lane. I'm just talking about the boundary change thing and the transition that you'll be talking about and the affected families that we call ourselves because we happen to be in that area that will be now Memorial, I'm sorry, North, instead of Memorial. So, there was just two things I wanted to talk about. One of our, the people that are in our group emailed the Board, I think it was today, and Abby, you responded and said something, because she was asking about busing, you might remember, Christine, and she asked about that, and you said, "Eau Claire Area School District anticipates providing buses for the three transition years to students living in the area affected by the change." So, I mean, I felt, she felt like you were saying that that means all students in the affected area will have the ability to choose which high school they go to, and I'm not sure if that's what you meant. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, also, you know, I've sent the combined letter from our group and I sent it email today, which I feel kind of summarizes our basic, basically, we hope that there can be one provision at least out of all of this, that if the change goes through with the timeline suggested by the committee, that there could at least be a provision for the parents of the children to be able to do an alternate enrollment request, which I believe goes through the principals. But I was hoping that the Board could support that request. I think as a, kind of, just a nice, nice provision to affected families, even if, you know, the changes go through with the timeline and all that, that the committee suggested. So, those are the two things that I was just hoping that the Board could address those things and address the combined letter to the affected family group, hopefully by email, so we have something as a solid answer to our suggestions.
Thank you, Jessica. The information that you talked about, all Board members have it. So, when we get to that part of the agenda, that information, whether it comes up for discussion or not, that's part of what the Board will discuss, okay? So, thank you for reiterating that for us.
Thank you.
Yep, your turn. Next on the list is Sam Barbie. Hi, Sam.
Hi, my name is Sam Barbie. I live at 3312 Edward Street. What I want to address here today is there's equity that's been talked about, the boundary change. That's an issue, but also safety is a big issue. I am, both my wife and I, we went to Memorial. We have purple in our blood. I'm from a family of eight. We all went to Memorial. We were young parents. We bought a house on the north side of town, and it's what we could afford at the time. Our kids have had a great education on the north side of town, and it needs to be commended to that area of Eau Claire. But where I'm coming from is also from, as a former football coach, I coached youth football for the YMCA for four years, and if you, and it's, football is a big numbers game. You have to have 11 on offense, 11 on defense. Then, of course, you have your reserves. You have maybe eight to 10 reserves in case there's injuries or players get tired. You need to be able to have at least 30 players at practice, to have an effective practice, to have a safe practice. So, again, equity, safety, there's not enough. JV play tonight, Memorial versus North. You guys probably all saw what happened on Friday. That is the fifth time this year that North has had a running clock against them because they've been losing by 35 points or more in the second half of games. Equity, safety, these guys are out there busting their tails, but they're not getting anywhere because they don't have the manpower to play. And I feel if you would give them, get this boundary change happening sooner rather than later, it gives these kids that are really trying their best a chance to have an equitable and a safe environment to compete. My son plays both JV and varsity, and he's out there against varsity, against guys 50 to 100 pounds lighter than him. He's getting bounced around like a pinball. But he goes out there and does it. Then he plays three days later on Monday in the JV game, and there he's at least against players similar size. But again, when you play two live games within a three-day time period, that's a toll on your body. And if he, if there was more kids playing, he wouldn't have to play so much in both. But there is a shortage of players, so he has to play on the JV, or else JV won't play. There's been one game that JV had canceled because there wasn't enough players this year. And it's a real concern, but if the Board's not going to do this, you may need to consider moving north to an eight-player league. But I don't want that, and I don't think anybody wants that. But it's not safe for the players unless you give them more bodies. There's no reason why one school in Eau Claire has an undefeated season, which Memorial does, and North, five out of six games, there's been a running clock in the second half, losing on average by 40 points. It's an equity issue. It's a safety issue. Please address this and get this change done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Bob Crone. You're good? Okay. And that concludes our public forum. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Next, we go on to our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Starting with September 27, at noon, there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, and that will take place here in the Administration Building. On October 3, at 7:00 PM, there is a Parent Advisory Council meeting, and that will be our first meeting of the school year. That also will be held at the Administration Building. On October 9, at 8:45 AM, there is a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, and that is followed later in the evening at 7:00 PM by a School Board meeting. On October 10, there's a Leap Committee meeting at 4:00 PM, and at October 12, there's a meeting of the Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee, and both of those meetings will be held here at the Administration Building. So, today is National Food Service Workers' Day, and I want to thank Joe Luganville for sending out an appreciation to the, our nutrition staff today on behalf of the Board. They certainly, probably more than anyone else, contribute to the development of our whole child by serving nutritious and healthy meals. They've served over 900,000 lunches last year and 270,000 breakfasts. So, they are working hard, and so we want to congratulate them. And Sue Brown, their leader, could not be with us tonight. Last week, we met with Meet and Confer, and they wanted us to stress the idea that the deadline for completing the requirements for the health insurance is fast approaching. It's by the end of the week, and so if you, as an employee, haven't logged into WebMed, please do so. There are some requirements in terms of getting your biometrics checked, completing your health risk assessment, looking at target goals, if those are something that you qualify for, and signing your consent form. So, that's a reminder for you. I also want to thank Danny Klasikas and Kai Young for their support of the Ninth Annual Border Battle Golf Tournament. And I want to thank the members, community members of the Planning Committee, Bob McCoy, Jerry Shea, Carl Mertz, Elijah Sandek, Scott Lau. We also want to thank Mark Hart Motors, Higgins Travel, Werzer Builders, and the Wildridge Country Club for their support of the event. In spite of the rain, I think it was a big success. And all of the proceeds for that event go to the Eau Claire School District's homeless program. And then I would like to thank the staff in Teaching and Learning and the Communications Committee for manning the ECASD booth at the Fall Festival on Saturday. They had a lot of enthusiasm. They were passing out calendars and cards and information about the school district and taking pictures of people telling them how ECASD inspires them. It was a great event, and they had a lot of activity at the booth. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hardbeck. Next is President's Report. I don't really have much of a report except to announce that we are planning a forum for potential candidates running for School Board. It'll be either the first or second week in December, so watch for that date once we have it firmed up. More the merrier. We have about an hour and a half forum so that people can ask questions if they're thinking about running for School Board, so I wanted people to know that. And that concludes my report, and that takes us on to our Student Rep Report. Lauren and Ryan, who's going first? Lauren's first. Good evening, Lauren.
All right. Well, it's Homecoming for Memorial this week, so it's exciting. We started off with Pyjama Day, and we'll have themed dress-up days. We're looking forward to this week's other activities, including Potter Puff Football on Wednesday, the Variety Show on Thursday, along with the North Memorial Volleyball Game, pep rally on Friday, and of course, the Homecoming Parade, Game, and Dance. With Homecoming this week, I'm just reminded of last year's Homecoming where we actually ran out of tickets for all students. So, once again, that's just kind of beating a dead horse here, but the border change really is an exciting thing because that, with more students at North, we're going to have fewer problems with that, such as Memorial. As was earlier mentioned, sports at North will benefit from the change. Memorial will have less crowding in our hallways and during lunch, smaller student-to-teacher ratio, enough parking passes to accommodate all of our students by the end of the year, which is always an issue. So, this really is just an exciting thing. I remember at the last meeting, it was mentioned, when do we think is a good time to institute the change? I recognize that changing it, for this, for current 8th graders going into freshman year, that is short notice. A lot of the complaints are regarding just identity and kids building themselves up to be, I'm going into this high school and I'm excited for that, and not to look down on that because that is an important thing, but I think it's also important to recognize that as, as students who are growing, change is healthy and being able to be positive in the face of that change is important. And so, for students to learn from that experience of changing schools, and it's going to be okay, and I'm going to make the best of that situation, is important. And then, before this, earlier, we had a meeting regarding academic recognition systems and changing to, potentially eliminating class rank or changing to a LOUDI system or a system of the sort. And so, just some early feedback from students. A lot of students really like the idea of switching from class rank to a LOUDI system or maintaining class rank for the sake of colleges that require it or applications that really want to see it, but not publicizing it. And many students would still desire having a class valedictorian and salutatorian, so keeping those in place under potentially a new system, which we'll be discussing, kids would really approve of that. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Lauren. Ryan?
Good evening. First off, I'd like to commend the students from North Star for coming in and supporting, supporting their beliefs. I think it's good to see young students like that taking initiative at such a young age and coming and supporting their beliefs. So, again, like Lauren said, her and I had a great meeting with Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Oldenburg regarding academic recognition systems, and I think that moving forward is something that is looking good, looking positive, and I've been calling for that for about a year now, and I'm glad that we're looking to that. And regarding the big vote tonight, equity is, of course, the issue that I've been, again, talking about for a year, and I think that you guys will make the right decision for all the students and help make the district a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. That takes us on to our School Board Committee Reports. Does anyone have a report? I think Commissioner Duax, Shared Services?
Yes, the Joint Commission on Shared Services met on September 14, and we will meet again in November. We don't meet very often, and so we always have to do a review of what, where we've been and where we're going, so that's kind of what we spend our time doing. But it's very worthwhile because it's a collaboration between the school district, the county, and the city governance bodies.
Thank you, Commissioner Duax. Commissioner Luganville, Policy and Governance?
Yeah, we had a meeting this morning. Most of our meeting was discussing our policy on school resource officers in the schools, and we're looking to update that policy for the first time in 17 years. So, there are a lot of changes that we're having to make and sifting through, and we received feedback from our Board Attorney, which we looked at this morning, and I expect that our next meeting, we're going to be looking at that again further.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to our legislative update. Commissioner Luganville, you're on board again.
Yeah, so I only have a couple things to share tonight, but you can visit my advocacy website. It's ECASD.us/advocacy, and I have a lot more detail posted up there each week. But first, I want to share that DPI recently submitted their official state plan under the ESSA. So, that's required by federal law that they submit that. Under ESSA, states must establish an accountability system to identify and turn around public schools in need of improvement. So, they have a lot of different measures that they're going to be looking at continuing, but also expanding in the coming year or two. So, definitely check that out. You can read all of that on that website I just mentioned. Also, on September 21, the state budget was signed into law by Governor Walker. You can read the governor's final budget vetoes by visiting WASB.org, the School Boards Association. There are also a number of non-fiscal policy items included in this budget, including teacher and administrator licensure changes and scheduling of referendum restrictions. But there are substantial increases in per pupil aid and other categorical aids, which is a big deal because since our governor took office, we've seen about $1 billion in disinvestment from public schools, so it's very needed, and it's very good news to see this in the budget, but also it will take a long time to recoup that, those cuts that have been made over the course of several years. There are also increases in school-based mental health funding, which is a positive, but we also did see continued expansion of the private school voucher program. But you can read all of those on the website as well. And finally, I want the Board to know that Wisconsin Senate Bill 169 passed out of the Senate Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety on September 20, five days ago. So, it will now be able to move forward to the Wisconsin Senate, and that bill, I don't know the title of it, but it would repeal and replace the state gun-free school zone statute, and it would very much limit our ability to restrict firearms on school premises and really restrict local control in that area. So, that's, again, Senate Bill 169, and we should really keep our eyes on that and probably send a letter from the Board at some point about that or written testimony.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. That takes us to our Consent Resolution Agenda. We usually vote on this in one vote. All Board members have been given information prior to this meeting, but if you would like to have any one of them pulled for additional information or comment, you may do so. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 11, 2017, the 2016-17 budget adjustments, gifts in the amount of $11,823.13 for the period of August 1, 2017 through August 31, 2017, payment of all bills in the amount of $5,168,439.84, and net payroll in the amount of $3,106,299.50 for the period of August 1, 2017 through August 31, 2017, human resources report, employment report, and revisions to Policy 185 School Board Committees. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Luganville?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duax. Can we please have a roll call vote, Patty? Thank you.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Having completed the Consent Resolution Agenda, we go next to an individually considered resolution, and we have one this evening. It is the Transition Timeline for the Boundary Change. I want to start out the conversation here thanking the committee, the Demo and Trends Committee, for their hard work, and the staff and the Board. Thank you deeply for your commitment to the listening sessions and your participation at such a high degree. It's greatly appreciated, not only by me as president of the Board, but certainly the community needs to see us out in the community. So, not just the Board, but our staff, Superintendent Patty, principals, we had a lot of staff that were there to answer questions. So, at this point in time, I'm going to open the floor to the Board to either make comment or we can pull motions from the Board, okay? If you pull up this part of, on your Board Docs, you will note that there is an administrative recommendation as part of our narrative, and the major points in the report are listed there as well. So, I'm going to, Commissioner Harder?
Somebody, I think I may have been the only one who raised some concern about the timeline in our last meeting, but I will say that since that meeting, Chris, your comment was very influential in influencing my opinion on this. Your comment about one additional year of equity is one additional year that child can't get back as a learner, and that was very impactful for me. And so, I'm definitely in a place now where I'm
And so I'm definitely in a place now where I'm, I'm not terribly concerned about, about doing this or waiting a year. I would like to kind of close the loop, though, on the question of, I think we talked a little bit about just maybe a brief overview of, of what the, the sort of standard practice would be in terms of bringing any student into, into high school and what that will look like for, for these, I think it's about 50 students who are going to be in this affected area. What is, what is that standard program that they're going to go through, just in broad terms? And is there anything special that we should consider doing for these students, or maybe, maybe it's really well-covered just with that standard stuff?
Well, we have a standard operating procedure for transitioning eighth graders to ninth grade. And among those activities are high school counselors traveling to the middle schools to meet with eighth graders to assist in the registration for next year's classes and answer questions about courses of study, that kind of thing. Students who have an IEP are scheduled to meet with their high school case manager, and sometimes those case managers will attend the middle school IEP meetings as well to become more familiar with the students and their needs. All eighth grade families are invited to an open house at the high schools during the freshman year registration, and I think that takes some place in time in January or early February. The fall, high school athletic coaches travel to the middle schools, and they try to have organizational meetings and give students information about activities. There's a club rush, which occurs at the start of the freshman year to introduce new students to various clubs and organizations that are outside those kind of regular co-curricular activities like band and choir and athletics. There is a student link crew organization at both high schools, and the link crew is really to designed to identify and partner upperclassmen at the high schools. And I think as we've gone through this discussion about the transition, we've realized that there may be a few differences at the two high schools, and so we'll be asking the students to work together to present a more consistent program at both high schools. And then the administrative staff from both buildings meet with the ninth grade class during their first week of instruction. And I think the idea is to kind of put a face on the administration, to be able to welcome students and introduce them to the school's resources. And then all freshmen and their families meet during the ninth grade year with the Student Services Department, and they review their academic and career plans together. So there are a number of activities. I think as we go through this transition, if people have other ideas, certainly both high schools are open to those ideas.
And so we're, I assume, on schedule to be able to provide all of those services for?
Yes, all of these activities happen as a matter of course, and they would continue.
None of them have already happened yet. They're, they're to come still.
Correct. And they happen every?
Yeah, it's just standard, and that link?
They happen every year. I'll just say it on the mic, so.
Exactly. It happens every year. In fact, my son just went through the LINK program. I think that's a great way to introduce. You have students introducing students to the high school, and I think that would be really helpful in this case as well, as it is for any student who's moving to high school. Yeah, so I, I think, you know, I, I kind of solicited comments about if, you know, in the interim between the last meeting and this one, from, from anybody about any special assistance that could be provided by the district. I didn't actually see anything come in. I think the points that I saw come in were more about choice and can we offer choice? And I, I guess my feeling is, that's never really been part of how we run the district is, I mean, there is choice through the regular channels, but I think a special choice for, for parents who are in these effective areas doesn't seem to quite compute for me. But, so yeah, I think, and, and, you know, Mr. Barbie brought up yet another good point about safety that I think is a really important one that I hadn't considered either. So I just want to make it clear that I'm ready to, for what it's worth, ready to vote yes on a 2018 timeline for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah, I just want to maybe address a couple of the things that have been brought up in public forums and some of the more public perception issues. You know, I think while it can be said that this issue has created a divide or conflict or border battle of sorts, I think we know such things are temporary. And if we don't know that yet, just look to Eau Claire's school history. You know, there was once a time where the concept of "among students" was a controversy in and of itself. There was once a time where the idea of attending DeLong Middle School, having your child attend DeLong, was seen as the worst nightmare for many families. People bought different homes. They moved because of that. When I attended North, after going to DeLong, I remember staying in touch with DeLong classmates and who were going to Memorial. And we kept in touch with, at the time, AOL and three-way calling on the landline after school and going to community events and movies. And it didn't matter where we lived or attended school after middle school. We remained friends. And that's such a gift that DeLong has. And again, it's such a gift that this, that's the school that we're working with here is DeLong. When you get down to it, I think the boundaries we create in our minds and in our local culture are much more impactful than the actual boundaries on a map. Mascots, school colors, expectations, stereotypes, stigma, history, those are all labels, though. So I hope that Eau Claire can start seriously looking to peel a few labels off and start moving forward. You know, so the one issue that's been brought up is the issue of choice. Why can't I choose where my child goes? Can there be a honeymoon period where we can decide, and that decision would stand until graduation? And that's been asked, and it's been said that we haven't responded to that directly. It doesn't take a political scientist to craft a hypothesis about what that might cause. Such a provision could only perpetuate the very inequity that we are seeking to remedy and continue the unhealthy manifested perception of have and have-not schools. Choice would be, if choice were an option, great, but it would only become an option for families with the means to do so. And a lot of folks wouldn't be able to drive their kids to a choice school, even if they had the option. They also, as double shifts or hourly jobs would have it, are sometimes not able to attend school board meetings and voice their opinions. And we haven't heard from any with that perspective, and I think that we can't lose that with all of this, that their voice and their families matter just as much. But, you know, now, no matter what decision we make tonight, and I, I also am in agreement with Commissioner Harder, but no matter what decision is made tonight, families can still utilize alternate school requests if they wish. No one wants to get rid of that option. It's an option that a number of families have looked to over the years for various reasons, and it's been a good option for many families. Families can still use open enrollment as a tool if they wish. They can get a voucher and choose a private school they want to go to or an online school. They can move their house. There are a lot of options, but, and it is up to families to decide what is best for them. But our job as a board tonight is not to mitigate each individual case, but rather to provide an equitable framework for everybody moving forward. So I think that's what we're focused on here. I think that our boundary process here, the first in a long time, has presented us with lessons that will allow us to do more and do better in the future. And mark my words, when I say future, this will happen in the future, and it will happen sooner than 30 or 40 years from now. You know, that's a really unhealthy thing that's happened. So we need to build in a more standard process for that. And I'll be the first to concede that our process, this go-around, hasn't been perfect. Of course not. We made a lot of compromises, as an elected body often does. Some are arguing that we didn't spend enough time in the community prior to our decisions, and some, for some reason, didn't hear about it. I understand where you're coming from, but bear in mind that this is the first board to act in a long time on this kind of an issue, with no modern precedent, no policy on our books in Eau Claire, really no state law that dictates how we do it, just says that it's our right to do it, and school, and no school board in Eau Claire that has touched this for quite some time. So I just wanted to say that to address some of the things that have been shared. But I finally want to say that I truly think, and I want us to label, if we're going to add a label, I want to add the label of trailblazer for the students that are going to be impacted. Like that mom, I read her email last board meeting. That is how I want to revere these students, because they're going to change Eau Claire history for the better, and I want them all to know that and claim that and own that. That's a really powerful thing. So, and I'm going to be like everybody else here, so proud to watch and see them flourish at both schools, as thousands have done before them. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. Commissioner Dux?
Well, I'm very pleased with the, the comments that have been made about the positives of making this boundary change. I think many, many people have seen the advantages and know that this is going to be wonderful for many students. And my kids went to North, so I'm a little prejudiced in that direction, that it's such a wonderful school. But I also know, like Joe said, that there are so many advantages. And I don't know if you remember being excited when you went to elementary school, and then you changed to middle school, and then you changed to high school. You've made three changes already. And then some of us went to college and had to learn lots of, meet a lot of people and make more changes. It's just part of life. So I'm, I'm going to ask President Hamburg Boyle to read the proposal that's on our screen. And I just, there was one more thing. Oh, now I forgot it.
That's okay. I, I have something I'm going to say, too, so you can come back if you remember.
Okay, you know what I'm going to say.
I don't know what you're going to say.
But I, oh, I know what I was going to say. I have a lot of trust in our administrators and our teachers that are going to make this wonderful for the kids. And so I'm just, I'm excited to see it happen, and I'm ready.
Thank you, Commissioner Dux. Patty, can you put my picture up? Thank you.
As I said at the last board meeting, I've lost a little sleep over this, but you know, you all know how much I love public schools and what they do, not just for our community, but for our country. And so I think, as I thought about this, we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard because we open our doors to all kids, and, and that's what makes public schools unique. And this was out, this has been changed many times, but this just recently went out again over social media. And it really spoke to me to bring tonight to say that in holding ourselves to a very high standard of equity in public schools, we want that equity to be the third image. All three see the game without any supports or accommodation because the cause of inequity was addressed and the systemic barrier has been removed. And our committee worked hard on equity prior to making the decision to do the boundaries, and if we wait any longer, it just proliferates that equity, inequity, and I, I can't do that either. As much as, you know, I as a person likes to make everybody happy, when I think about my life in special education and where we have to speed up development to close those gaps, and I've seen it in children my whole life, we can't wait any longer. So I am also thinking that we need to do this now. Commissioner Luganville?
Is, if, and if no one else has a comment, I would make a motion, but I don't want to do that yet until everyone's, okay.
Commissioner Vu?
I just want to add my comment that whatever decision we made tonight, I believe with confidence that it reflects the core value of the Eau Claire School District. We, as a board, charge a committee to look over this concern of the district. In doing that, we take on having a courage to look at a bold situation and come up with a bold decision. We try to be fair by having the listening session so that information presented during the session would either change our mind or move forward with the previous recommendation, which led to the transition question. I believe we are being consistent, we are being honest, and we are being accountable to the district when it comes to equity and spending the district resource properly. We heard comment about imbalance, and I believe with firm confidence that we are trying to balance that imbalance with thoughtful and with confident and with sincere. I would vote to move forward fast and follow the recommendation of the committee.
Can I have a motion from the floor? Commissioner Luganville?
I, I don't know if, if my wording is different from the administrative recommendation. So can we get that on the screen? Or do you have something for me to, okay. The, okay. My only question, well, I'll make this motion. I mean, my only, my only question, though, is if there needs to be an addition to it pertaining to the, we don't have on here about alternate school requests. And I know it's a, it's a given for, for us, but I think for many it isn't. And there's been that question, so I don't know how we communicate that, if we put it in the motion or just find a different way.
So we did not include that motion or that provision in the motion, and we did not include it because we didn't want to hold out kind of hope for people that they could use that as a way to, you know, change their school placement. There are very specific criteria for alternate placement, and if a student meets one of those criteria, there, there is a possibility of change, but we didn't want to muddy the waters by including it in the recommendation.
Yeah, that makes sense. So I'll make this motion.
Made by Commissioner Luganville. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harder. Can we take a? Did you have, oh, Commissioner Becca, before we vote, go ahead.
Yes. One population of children that I don't see reflected in these recommendations, but that was, they, it was discussed by community members during the listening sessions, are children whose parents maintain different residences in the district. And I think it's a large population of people. And so as a, a package, I wouldn't want, many families, I think, will face that situation, and I, is it appropriate to consider those students in this motion?
We typically look at those situations on a case-by-case basis. Some of it depends on custody arrangements, and we try to work with the families.
So I think what you're saying is that if a child was in a Memorial residence, they, and one of the parents lived in the Memorial Residence area, then they would go to Memorial. That was their choice. But it, does it have to matter how much custody they have at which, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Custody comes into play more so at the elementary level when children are not given an opportunity through the court system to have choice. As a student progresses through middle school and certainly when they're in high school, even if a custody is with one placement, the court would typically allow the high school student to choose to live with a non-custodial parent. If a parent lives, if there's one parent that lives in both sides of town, the child really would have a choice because both parents have a residence, a primary residence in the Eau Claire School District in a high school boundary. There aren't as many as you may think, and typically the families already know which school they're going to attend, probably pretty well balanced between the two schools. But there would be no legal way to deny a student who has a biological parent who resides in one neighborhood. in one neighborhood or the other from attending a different school if they have another family, a biological parent, living in that other attendance area.
Commissioner Duex?
This is common practice, is it not, for administration to take care of these children on a case-by-case basis? So, I would not suggest that we add an amendment at this point.
Question answered. Commissioner Beekah? Okay. Are we ready for a roll call vote? Have you looked at everybody? Yes? Patty, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Beekah? Yes. Commissioner Duex?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
That moves us on to, we're adjourned, to committee reports and items for discussion. The first one up is our summer school report, and I bet that's Jim. Good evening, Jim Schmidt.
That looks right. All right. Good evening. I'm very excited to give you an update of how summer school went this last summer. It was a very exciting summer, so we're going to share with you some, some trends that we've seen over the past few years and, and some of the data that we have and some feedback that's new to us this year that we've never asked for before. So, we'll get started, and I love this picture of our, of our program. This is sort of our, our, sort of the branding that we had for summer school this year and really captures some of the excitement, enthusiasm that we developed through summer school. This is, has a lot of alignment with our strategic plan. Thank you. A lot of alignment to our strategic plan, and we are pretty excited with how far reaching this is. One of our messages with summer school is it should look as much like the school year, but even, even more exciting sometimes. We really try to make this part of the culture of extending that school year as much as possible. We know summer school is a wonderful opportunity for us to mitigate the summer slide. Summer slide is very real. It's one of those ways that we try to mitigate the, the achievement gap with our students. And so, really trying to change that culture of how do we provide summer learning for students. And often, it's new and engaging ways. And so, the program has grown quite a bit. You're going to see some of that data as a result. You'll see, these are the district course enrollments over the past three years. This is just in our buildings for our programs, not our summer partnerships. So, you can see the efforts that we've done over the past three years have really risen our summer enrollment. We have, we've increased each year quite a bit. And the big part of that this year was really our elementary programming. What we did this year was shift that elementary programming, so every school had a regular full program that was owned by their school, develop some themes for, for their program, and really generate a lot of enthusiasm and excitement. And so, we really had a large expansion. We'll get into that detail about elementary really soon, but we're real excited about the number of students engaging in that, in that summer school internal opportunities. Our partnerships also have seen an increase. And you can see the purple ones are new partnerships that we've never had before. We've had, in general, a large increase. We had a few go down, but that was actually by design because we want to try to move some more funding to, to increase the number of opportunities. But in general, you can see overall, our total partnership, membership, and these are the numbers, different students enrolling in programs went up. When you see 5,870, that could be one child taking something three times, they count as three. So, it's not 5,870 unique students, it's 5,870 students or different course enrollments. And so, you can see that right now, we've got, we've got several partners and really having enrollment that is, that has grown quite a bit. So, we're seeing large increases across the board. One of the big things we pushed this last year was trying to create, if you will, family-friendly course options. And by that meaning is not having our parents having to, or our guardians having to go and move kids throughout the day. We know that one of the greatest barriers leading into the summer was the fact that if I want my child to be involved in a program, but I have to go drop them off, pick them up, and I have to leave work at least one time, that becomes really challenging for a parent. They, they don't always have that fun little yellow limousine that comes by during the school year. So, we had to figure out a way to try to create more opportunities that from when they drop them off to when they pick them up, they're going to be under the care of a highly qualified adult. And if that exchange has to take place, that could be done in a very safe and supportive way. So, what we did is we looked at, one thing we did this year was we bused kids after our elementary, middle school internal program, programming to the Boys and Girls Club at no cost. That was one option. They had to become club members, and there was both district programming down there and Boys and Girls Club programming there as well. So, that was one option, and our students literally could go right from class in the morning, right on the bus. The first thing they did when they showed up was they got lunch, and then they went right into their programming after that. We also had programming in our buildings with Parks and Recreation, so at nine of our elementary schools. And we're hoping to expand this next year to include all of our schools, having students go straight from their programming right into Parks and Rec programming for the rest of the afternoon.
Jim, is that the playground, Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Piece gotcha. I used to work for that. Long time.
Another one is Boys and Girls Club and Beaver Creek. So, they are both partners, and we actually brought those two partners together and said, is there a way that we could actually have our students go to the, some students, of our students go to the Boys and Girls Club all day when, when our summer school is not taking place? They'll go there all day. And so, we actually developed a partnership between our partners to have students go out to Beaver Creek Reserve from the Boys and Girls Club. The bus actually came right to them. So, again, the parents didn't have to get their students out to the Boys and Girls Club, or out to the Beaver Creek Reserve, it came right to them. Another example, fortunately, the distance between these two sites is so small that we actually had them walked by the, the staff at the two different organizations between the Boys and Girls Club and the Theater Guild. So, again, if you're a parent wanting your kid to take Theater Guild classes, and they're young enough that you're hoping that they get there safely, we arranged so that they could actually be walked back and forth, an opportunity to have diverse programming and still under the care of an adult the entire time. Priory Pioneers, formerly called Nature Nuts, I love the name, but they gave up the name because Beaver Creek Reserve had the name Nature Nut. So, they, we put them in a room, and they figured out who got to keep the, the name that I love so dearly. And so, the, the, the old Nature Nuts, now Priory Pioneers, actually became part of our program this year for the first time. And so, students that did bilingual beginnings, which is the language immersion course through the UW Eau Claire programming, and the Priory Pioneers, if they were signed at the same time, we actually provided lunch in the middle, and they just moved within the same facility out at the Priory between the two. So, again, family could get them there. They're not in one program all day, they're in two different programs. Parents didn't have to worry about getting them from spot A to spot B, the adults took care of that within the program. Camp Invention was a one-week-long camp that we do at the National Inventors Hall of Fame. We bring that onsite to our, our, our district, and it's underwritten through a grant from the Nordson Foundation. And so, that's another opportunity over four days where the students, from very beginning of the day to the end, are completely with, in immersed programming with, again, highly qualified adults. I keep reminding people that that's how that works. Chippewa Valley Theater Guild does a week or two-week-long workshop, Shakespeare Workshop, again, all-day programming. Youth Leadership Eau Claire at the Eau Claire Area Chamber is a two-day program, I believe. We have some veterans of that sitting amongst us. So, they, again, the opportunity to have an overnight programming again, so we get them, they show up at the chamber, they come back to the chamber and in between. In that particular case, Becky Seeland makes sure they get from A to B without any, any harm, and a lot of good quality learning along the way. Unfortunately, the, this ran this year. The unfortunate part is it got cut short a day because, because of weather. So, the safety camp, again, is an all-day experience. Summer Institute, the students do have an opportunity to sign up for one, if not all, programs. We worked with Summer Institute on some funding options. In the past, families used to get one course for free, and then after that, they had to pay for courses. This time, it was free throughout the entire course opportunity, so families could be taking part of that both before and after lunch. Blue Go Beginnings has the overnight camps that we ran. And so, did UW Eau Claire Youth Leadership Pre-College, that we have some experience on the board with. And finally, our Upper Bound and the UW Stout. So, those last four provided overnight or full-day opportunities on college campuses, which was a great advantage for our students. And they, many of them target students that need those type of experiences to become college and career-ready and opportunities to be, to get a advanced learning and experiences towards becoming future college students. So, a lot of programming, and we've got ways to go still, because again, our goal is really to try to, as much as we can, have that child, if the families choose to somewhere be from beginning of the day to the end of the day, if they choose to be in a learning environment. Yes?
I have a question. Because I've interfaced with my own kids with several of these, but now with the collaboration, it really becomes available to more families.
Absolutely.
And that's, and that's equity as well. Yeah, thank you.
So, this is our number of staff hiring. You'll notice that the certified and classified, the certified number stays the same, but you see this big spike with our classified. That's a lot of special education aides. And this year, we hired a lot more people to increase because, again, we wanted the school year and the summer to look similar. And we recognized that there were a lot of barriers for families with special needs students, students with special needs, and we really wanted to break those barriers down. We probably overshot this a little bit, we probably could trim this back a little bit more next year, but we really wanted to make sure that we create an all-inclusive environment. So, to give you an example, we had, one of our partnerships was with the Boy Scouts, and they ran a outside camp. We got a call saying that we had a student who had a, he needed, whose IP had that student have one-on-one attention. We put an aide in place for that student so that we make sure that student could have that experience just like they would if they were part of our in-school programming. So, again, that number spiked quite a bit, but a lot of that was really to bring down a lot of those barriers. But we have a lot of, our greatest challenge in summer school is really finding staff to, to, to match the programming, because it happens to be the same time when people are, they need a little bit of a break too, whether they're taking coursework or something like that. So, we're kind of at this little bit of a tension of, we're expanding, but at the same time, we've, we've got a staff that's, that's stretching too, to try to meet that demand. So, this was new. Get to take one. Have you slowed it? It gets lighter as it goes on down there. Or take one and pass it. You get to keep one there. So, something else that was new for us this year was the summer school planning guide. And for years, this, the summer school, you need to pull together several different handouts, flyers, all that. We put this all in one big package. And so, the guide is, this was actually very warmly received. I was tempted to bring this to any meeting that didn't even apply to summer school because it just got everyone off to a happy start. It just seemed like we could really, like people really enjoyed having the one-stop-shop for all their programming. The negative on this was that we didn't get it because of, we didn't anticipate it taking as long as it would take to publish it. We moved our timeline so that this will hit mailboxes by March 1st, because a lot of our partners will advertise beginning March 1st for their programs to begin to, to begin to participate, or begin to sign up. So, this guide is going to go to print in February, which, which will put it in mailboxes by that due date. And so, as you can probably guess, our summer school planning began about a month ago. So, we're already in the, we're already in the heart of it. We already have our partner meetings, they're starting this week. We've already talked with principals earlier this month about changes we want to see for next year. So, we're already in the early phases of, this is version 1.0, but hopefully, version 2.0 is going to look better and, and even be more user-friendly for families. This is available electronically to our families, as well as everyone received one in their mailbox. No one had to go get it, it showed up for them. So, this was a big, this was a big step forward for us in terms of programming. So, I hope you, I hope you enjoyed it as much as we did, but we're pretty excited about, about those changes. The other piece, we also created a quick URL for our families, ECC.us/summer, where you could find the guide. And then we had a lot of online registration options available for, for folks. And then when we, we even had a couple, I mentioned the Boy Scouts, Chippewa Valley Museum, those are two partners that came to us after print. We were actually still able to get that information out to families via Skyward. And so, we'll have their, their information here, but we, and we still were able to fill those classes as well. One of the things we did for our partners, and that starts on page, the partnership options and summary begins on page 34. And then if you notice, each partner had a one, each program had a one-page at least, although Chippewa Valley Technical College, we had to put a few more just because of the number of courses. But we gave them each a page color, ability to, to share about their program, which was really a big help for them, because then they then use it in their own, their own communications as well. So, a couple of things, or a few things that, with each of these that stayed the same, things that changed. So, in our early learning and elementary offerings, we continued that busing to and from title schools. And then we, and then we still continue the summer library program. Some things that we changed though, again, where we piloted kindergarten classes. So, in the past, incoming first through fifth graders, we're always, we always ran programming for them, but this was the first year we did kindergarten at, at five schools, and the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. I'm really to have, help students develop a lot of positive relationships in, in that transition. So, we're, we're in the, we're talking with principals next year about having this happen all across the district. This was the first year in the past, we had had, our title schools had had their own programming, and then the non-title schools did discovery. And we just had each school do their own programming and really said, can we bring, can we bring that remediation or getting ready back for school and discovery and merge that into one thing? And that's what we did, and it, and it worked real well. And the other thing is we, we included athletic camps as part of summer school. Our athletic camp enrollment went up quite a bit. And part of the goal was to provide an opportunity for students to participate and remove barriers, really get more kids involved. We allowed for differentiation of instruction so that we could have students be supported at the level they were at. And really tried to take away a lot of the managerial and clerical duties that coaches used to have to do, and to put that upon the, the staff in the building, the administrative staff in the building, and from the teaching and learning and summer school office. Middle school, we continue to offer the programming in, in the core areas, some study skills, music. Music was very big again, as you can tell, takes up a lot of pages in the book. And, and then the English learner program and some discovery courses, those things continued. But new again, again, we had camps there as well, the same story as the, as the elementary school, and then that busing to the Boys and Girls Club like we did at the elementary. High school, we continued the credit recovery all the way through the discovery, strength and conditioning, and music. And then new this year was we brought in the Special Education Practical Assessment Exploratory System, or PACE Labs. PACE Labs is basically, if you can think about it, there's classroom instruction and special education to help transition students. Then there's the workplace. This is a simulated work environment, so it's in the middle, and it happens on our campus, so it's a nice transition, and not just nice, it's, it's a, it's a research and evidence-based program that supports the transition of those students to the workplace. So, we're able to begin that this summer. We also had some special education programs in English and math for, for students going from grades eight to nine. We get athletic courses. And then we really increased our online course offerings for both remediation and credit attainment by having drop-in labs. We have some ideas this next year on how we can really leverage that in a different way. We learned a lot of lessons this year, but that was our first time trying to do those labs. And then finally, we surveyed our families for the first time. We got a bunch of different comments and feedback from them that we really appreciated, but one thing we'd asked for was an overall rating. And as you can see, 87% of our families that responded gave us a four or five on a scale from one to five. If we all go all the way down to a three or higher, that was 98%. So, we received a lot of strong feedback from our families that what we're doing is working. We have a lot of things we want to improve. One of the things I mentioned was the kindergarten piece. We're looking at trying, one of the things that we constantly are doing is trying to find gaps and overlap. So, for example, some of those summer camps happen at the same time as the instruction in June. We're going to try to make sure that those conflicts don't exist, because we really want to have families recognize that there's, we don't want them to get stuck in, boy, we love both of these, but they're at the same time. Really trying to avoid that. We really also, again, with gaps, so for example, we got so targeted that we were down to middle school students in the afternoons in July. We needed something for middle school afternoon July. Worked with the library, they offered coding and some other, some of their little dabblebox. And not only did we fill, they doubled the, they doubled what they filled, and, and we still had more that they couldn't fill. So, we just, when we find those gaps, it, it works out pretty well that we've been, we've been honing in, and, and if we can just find a match between what we need offered and, and what the gap is, or, and then, and then have the gap actually staffed, that's worked really well. And we'll continue to work on, we have other partnerships that we're looking into. And, and the final thing that, one of the big pieces we've been looking at also is credit recovery at the high school. And, and right now, it's very time-based and really looking at it being much more skills-based, where students are that open lab-type idea we're looking at for next year of trying to get students, really just targeting the skills that they need to be ready to move on to the next level rather than just putting in three weeks. And so, that sounds easy, but it's going to take us a little bit of work to make that work. So, we're going to, we're working with the high school principals right now on that for next year. So, that's summer school in a blast. What questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Harder?
This is great, Jim. Thanks for going through it. And it's really, this booklet is super appealing, and it's great to see the engagement ramping up. It looks like, so this...
get students, really just targeting the skills that they need to be ready to move on to the next level rather than just putting in three weeks. And so, that sounds easy, but it's going to take us a little bit of work to make that work. So, we're gonna, we're working with the high school principals right now on that for next year. So, that's summer school in a blast. What questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Harder?
This is great, Jim. Thanks for going through it. And it's really, this booklet is super appealing and it's great to see the engagement ramping up. It looks like, so is this a little over 50% of the student body? Is that about right where we're at this, as of this year?
You know, actually, that's one of the data points that you bring up is we, we have the membership, but we haven't gone through and actually figured out how many unique participants we have. Because our data comes in differently from our partners, we haven't been able to match that up. So, that's one of our things we're going to try to collect. I'd love to give you, I'd like to say, this many percentage of unique participants, but I don't have that yet.
And then the other question I was thinking of was, what is the length for those on average? You know, is it the length of engagement over a summer? Is it a, is it one, one of the events? Is it multiple events?
Oh, yeah, like how many, like, like the frequency, like if, like if I take the number of students, how many students took one, like one week or two weeks, et cetera?
Yeah, exactly.
I can, we can work on that.
And I think about this in particular with the question of, obviously, we've talked about the calendar quite a bit and I caught a little bit of that in my time on the board at the tail end of the, the most recent calendar discussion. And the question of summer learning loss is, was a big one that I ended up reading quite a bit about during that conversation. And I think this was one of the programs that was pointed to as, to help with that and I could see how it would. But I'm wondering, are there specific things we're doing in relation to the question of some, summer learning loss, particularly as it affects, because we know, I think statistics show pretty clearly that it disproportionately affects, you know, for some different socioeconomic groups. Are we doing any of that kind of tracking to try to see what effect this is having?
Yep. So, right now, because they all are three weeks, we, we could, we haven't yet and we could. And again, one of the other issues we're looking at is, do we try to, especially at our lower-income schools, provide even a longer than three-week period for that? Because if we can have students engage in a longer period of time, that obviously would, the research tells us that that will, you know, once we start getting to the five to eight weeks zone, that's a little bit more supportive of the research in terms of mitigating that slide. It's got to be, of course, high-quality experience. One of the things that we don't see is five to eight weeks of how long each day. And so, that's part of what we have to dig into as well, is to try to figure out, you know, in longer, but how long each day during that time period.
Commissioner Luthenbill? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, this is great. I'm just curious about the last line in one of the slides about the online option. And you said that'll be new this, this coming summer. Is that something that, we're going to look at that and maybe see about expanding that depending on how it goes beyond summer school, but as an additional option?
So, the, the online, I'm getting, there we go. So, we did do online this summer.
Oh, you did, okay.
We did. And so, it was, it was mostly for, so, we didn't open it up to all students right away. What we did is we, we wanted to try it out. And so, we found it, what we did is we asked families if they, when they, they could typically sign up for, there's two different semesters, if you will, during summer school. There's a fall, or the fall and spring, if you will, it's in June and then July. And so, we put on the registration that if the times didn't work for you, let us know and then we contacted them about trying this, just to see how it would work. So, we have in the past allowed students to take credit attainment up to one credit, you know, just to earn credit to work your way forward. And then to the other pieces for credit remediation is to sit in class. This was our first time of trying to do that much more purposely online. We saw enough success, there were some areas that, that, like the drop-in lab part, we have to kind of work on to make sure that staffing is, we had a lot of dead time in the lab. But we did see there was a big advantage for having students take that online experience. So, we really do want to see an expansion in that area. Because again, the online, what the online allows us to do, the tool we've been using allows a student to pre-assess themselves. And then, so you have this whole body of work that they need to accomplish to earn credit. But if they pre-test out of half of it, they only have to focus on that second half as opposed to having to sit there for the entire time. They just spend their time on the part that they need to literally remediate to be ready for the next level. And that's very appealing from both the student and from our level because we really want them ready for that next, next step.
Yeah, that just caught my eye because I, I know we lose some kids in, in the Oakley area to online school in this state, but it's not through us, it's through some private or some other public school. So, I wondered if at some point, maybe we'd see, maybe this is an option we should provide through our, our own district, but.
Yeah, it's, you know, the, there are some rules, we were looking at that about the way you count students because they do have to open enroll into you to be part of your summer programming. And then DPI has got, all of this comes back to participation and minutes and memberships. So, the more students are involved, the more minutes you get to count, the more minutes you get to count, then you get a higher revenue capacity. In other words, the ability to then offer more programming. So, back to your question, or back to your point though, is that you, there is an option to allow students to open enroll and we just haven't gone down that road because we really haven't advertised it yet.
Commissioner Duhax?
Well, I'm just, I just want to congratulate you and your committee. This is phenomenal and it's a beautiful book and, and lots of great ideas. I remember when my kids, 20, 25 years ago, they looked for things to do in the summer and they had art class maybe, or a poetry class and, but nothing to this extent. So, I just, I'm very excited about what you've done. The only suggestion that might help others in the community, because many churches have vacation Bible school and they might like to know when this is, these things are running so they know when to schedule their own church activities.
Yeah, we can definitely share that with, with those organizations. That's a good idea. I would also like to let you know that if I actually had everyone in the room that worked on this, it would fill these seats plus many more. There's, I, I get to take the credit for standing here, but this, this has been every principal, committees in their buildings, teachers, I mean, there's a lot of people that are involved. HR does a wonderful job of try, I mean, think about this, we have to try to hire a significant number of people for a short period of time. It's a, it's a huge effort.
There's so many details, I just, it's overwhelming to look at.
So, to give you an idea though, we had a meeting just this past week. We had human resources, business, payroll, teaching and learning. We, I mean, we've got every area, buildings and grounds, every area in the organization is represented in that because it is really a mini-school year. And so, this is, this is a lot of folks. This is not just, this is not just a small team. So, that's been great.
I just wanted to add, you know, when I, when I used to be itinerant special education at the preschool level, my days were spent in childcare, supporting kids with IPs. And so, the, the school year would get over and where do all the kids go? They go to childcare. And, you know, they were doing PBIS and they were doing lots of stuff that coordinates with the school district. So, I, I know you're probably doing some of this, but we have 22 collaborative sites out there for 4K and they, many of the childcare is where the kids are in the summertime, so.
Heidi and I have talked about ways we can try to, so one of the things, again, we've been really trying to break down some assumptions. And one of the assumptions was special, students with special needs, right? And so, I think we did a huge effort this year to break down those barriers. The last two years, we've been working at getting people to realize that when you are enrolled in 4K, you are now eligible to be part of our summer school membership. And so, the Children's Museum of Eau Claire has been a good, a strong partner with us. And Heidi and I have been talking about how can we really expand the footprint for that incoming 4K student to be a participant? And so, that's been part of our conversation.
I, I figured it was, but I just had to say.
Absolutely. But again, that's been, it has been not well-understood that those students are eligible to be part of our summer school program and they are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, Jim, very much. That takes us on to the next thing on our committee reports, which is our update on referendum projects. And I think that's Larry. Hi, Larry.
Chris. Excuse me, President. Just a reminder to ask.
Oh, yeah, is anybody, Larry, before you, does anybody from the audience have any comments about the summer, thank you Patty, I always forget, about the summer school presentation Jim just did? Seeing none, Larry, you can take, take it, take it over.
Good evening, everyone. We've had a busy summer this year with construction projects. You have a PDF of the summer that we had, but I'd like to pull up a separate document I have because there's a piece of summer school in it. So, as part of, I'll start our referendum projects. We had roofing projects north, didn't quite get the roofing project done there. We're going to be finishing it in June next year. We got probably 85 to 90% of the roof that we had attempted to roof this summer done. Weather wasn't the most cooperative with all the rain, so we'll be finishing that off. The service center and district office, we've got to start on those projects. Secure entrance, we're finishing up our punchless on north and North Star. Exterior doors and vestibules, we worked at Davie, Memorial, north and Northwoods. Parking lots and playgrounds, we worked on Lakeshore, Meadowview, north and North Star. Miscellaneous projects we had were Memorial boiler and chiller replacement, tuck pointing at Memorial, North Star fire alarm. The original budget for these projects was basically $5.4 million. Our construction completion estimate is around 4.7 and we did some additional work with those projects that we'll get to. Now, there you see a rather open North Star office. It's fairly well-completed now, we're doing the final touch-up there to get that done. Lakeshore playground, we've got that in. We re-did some of the fence work, did the striping, paving. We also installed a new piece of playground equipment there this summer outside of the referendum. Memorial boilers and chillers. Due to the favorable bidding that we had due to oil pricing with roofs and parking lots, instead of doing one boiler and one chiller at each of the high schools, we're going to be able to completely replace the original boilers, both of them from the buildings, and take care of chiller issues there as well. So, we'll have a completely coordinated heating and cooling system in those buildings. North parking lot, complete new look there along with some additional landscaping. Lot of the change was inspired by Safe Rouse's School and some requests that they made. We were able to incorporate that and some revisions to the plans to get that project done. Robbins re-roof, we did another section there. We didn't re-roof the entire building during the last referendum because there was still some useful life left in the roof. So, we didn't want to tear off roofing at that point. That still had five to eight years of life left in it. North Star, we redid the paving there. There you'll see they had their summer school drone class. So, they were able to go out.
I love this, Larry. Summer school drone class, you guys, yes.
So, we've got a short video. They had several video clips that they had. I just selected one to incorporate into the presentation this evening.
I would think two in their advanced drone class and they take it and speed it up so we could see the whole project all in two seconds.
I'm thinking I want to hire them next summer to do all our projects. So, really provides an interesting perspective of the projects. So, there's more clips out there. So, with the project savings, as I said, with the low oil prices that we had, we're replacing both existing boilers and chillers at Memorial. We're going to be doing the same thing at north. With the parking lots that we did, we were able to also complete new LED parking lot lighting for Lakeshore, Meadowview and North Star. Some of that is going in as we speak. So, we've done things that number one's going to increase our energy efficiency in our buildings. And as with the parking lot, we've got lights now that hopefully we don't have to touch for 20 to 25 years. We don't have to replace bulbs and we're going to be using less energy through the years with the LED lighting. So, five-year projects. We had numerous projects, window replacement in this building along with ADA toilet room remodeling at the bathrooms and some in the knock area. Toilet partitions at Lakeshore, Locust Lane re-roof, we're going to be doing this fall, hopefully yet, some tuck pointing at Meadowview. Memorial band doors, we added a double door into the band room there so they're able to get some of the larger instruments in and out without having to disassemble the pieces. Toilet partitions at North Woods and also gym curtains at south. We did a number of doors and vestibules again out of the five-year with the district office, Montessori, Longfellow Mans, Meadowview, north and Northwoods. Flooring, we got flooring replaced at Lakeshore, or excuse me, Locust Lane and Longfellow and Memorial will be working throughout the year and possibly in the next summer to do some work with Davie, Flynn and Lakeshore. Our original budget was 1.6. Right now, we're standing about 1.675 million dollars on those projects. Give you some example, there's flooring at Locust Lane. We did some flooring for about half the classrooms at Northwoods. It's our intent to do the other half this next year, next summer. Locust Lane re-roof, we bid this project but deferred it about four or five years ago due to fund, funding at that point in time. So, that roof is, a portion of the roof is now done. This is a new door at Davie. Again, trying to reflect the architectural history of the building, trying to replicate the window pattern and style of doors from that period. Longfellow door number three.
Hey, Larry, I never noticed all those little things above the door at Sam Davie.
Pardon?
I never noticed all those little.
Divided lights.
And the, and the little carvings above the door.
Yes.
I must, I just never looked at it long enough. Well, yeah.
Well, there's no sidewalk leading up to that, so people aren't encouraged to go to that doorway. It's used primarily for emergency exiting.
That's too bad, no.
Conclusion, that's this last summer. Next summer is going to be tremendously busier than this last summer. So, we have a busy planning season. We're already starting planning for secure entrances for next year. We're already starting of our, some of our design work for next summer's projects. Any questions?
So, any questions from the board? I just wanted to say I'm thankful for all your work and your hard work and I can tell you're just, I mean, you're passionate about this, so that's really good. And thank our taxpayers for the referendum because that's.
And patience for the principals and also all my staff that put a lot of hard time in.
So, and you bring lots of chocolate and tell people stuff over time because of the weather and I could just see that all happening. So, thank you. Anybody else from the board? Commissioner Duhax?
I just want to say thank you and I'm, I'm finally happy that the parking lot at north looks decent. It looks very nice.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience for Larry, for us? Thanks, Larry. Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which is an update of the budget and I bet that's, maybe. Yeah, our favorite person. Thanks, Abby.
So, it's budget season. So, we'll get to see lots of things in the next few weeks. But tonight, I just wanted to give you an update as to where we're at and what things are looking like today. So, tonight, we'll talk about the impact of the state budget. We'll talk about the impact of the referendum and then just the major categories and where we're at today. One thing that we've been trying to do really hard with all of our presentations is tie all of the things to the strategic plan. And so, we have big picture strategic plan links and then as we get into the slides and more information, I kind of separate them out a little bit better to tell you what kind of, how the budget matches into the strategic plan. So, in goal number one under academic achievement, our. So in goal number one under academic achievement, our school improvement plans, our testing, our academic partnerships, the learning center at Eau Claire Music School, alternative education, LEAP, Tableau and the Avid program that's happening South are all things that we're doing. We started a year ago, some of them are new this year and expanding this year. But those are things that all are in our budget that meet that goal number one of academic achievement. If we look at goal number two, which is student social and emotional growth, many of the programs that we have that you're familiar with fall under there as well. Project Search, Life Without Limits, school-based mental health, our nurses, our counselors, our K-12 insight surveys, the homeless program, music, art, drama and co-curriculars can all be defined as meeting goal number two. Goal number three is our collaborative cultures. A lot of professional development is considered to fall under there. Our school improvement plans and their professional learning communities, staff engagement surveys and teaching and learning shouldn't, a restructure isn't down there anymore, but we are continuing to learn more about how do we all work together and how do the buildings and TNL work together to make a successful district. Number four is our high-quality staff. Obviously last year we had a transition to a new salary schedule. We have the National Board Certification Workshops, the PDP reviewer program, the mentor program and again professional development because that's very important for all of our staff. And goal number five is the partnerships with communities and families. And Jim just talked a lot about them a few minutes ago with the summer school program, school resource officers, partnership coordinators, building use and again that learning center at Eau Claire Music School. That was something that was new this year that was new last year that was working well for our middle school students and there's a hope to continue and be able to expand that program as well. So what do we know?
Commissioner Duhak?
I'm sorry.
Well, I thought that would also include the McKinley students because they were offered that opportunity too.
I think the targeted students for that program is seven, eight and nine. And so, but Pete is the one that is working with that program and developing that relationship. So I don't know. It is. It sure is. So it was important, we wanted to share an update, what did 2017 end up looking like? And so I know that the percentages and the numbers may be a little bit difficult to read. But basically this is our pie chart from last year of where did we spend our money? And to no surprises, most of our funds are spent on salaries and benefits for our employees. So that's the biggest part of the circle on the right-hand side and that's 72.81%. If we look at our purchased services, which would be our transportation, it would be our contracts and our academies like with CVTC, the music school would fall under there as well. That's 16.07% of our budget that was spent last year. Supplies was 3.91%. Capital, equipments and remodeling projects were about 3%,. We had a half of percent that goes to insurance costs for the district. This is not health insurance, this is, you know, our property and our casualty and that type of insurance. And then 3.28% was spent on other items which would be student entry fees for athletics, district dues and fees. And so that's kind of the breakdown. So where we are today, here is our current operating budget and what that looks like. And so you can see that the salary and benefit portion has increased to 76.81% of our budget. Contracted services is down a little bit and not a lot of other significant changes when we're looking at the budget in general where we are today. Again, it does not surprise me at all that salaries and benefits are the highest portion of how we're spending our money because we're people-dependent and we have a lot of staff. Let's talk about revenue for a minute. Commissioner Logan-Bill mentioned earlier tonight that the state budget was signed last week and there were some vetoes. And so we're currently anticipating $200 more per pupil this year for 1718 budget. We have not received any word officially yet from DPI as to what does that look like for Eau Claire. I can tell you that based upon our student count last year, that's approximately $2.2 million for us. But you know, again, that will change based upon what our final count is third Friday and that we should have that by the end of the week. The question that I have and a concern that I have is how are the vouchers going to impact us? We know what happened last year, we know we had $500,000 plus of our budget was related to vouchers in the area. I do know that the cap this year increased from 1% to 2% of students. I did confirm with DPI that they are not expecting us to cap out for 1718. But again, we know last year we had 1%, so we'd at least have 1%. And then as students move through the two different funding sources, you know, that number's going to continue to grow until, until all of the students are on that new funding plan. And so I'm very anxious to hear about that. The other thing that I'm very curious about is with the special needs vouchers. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, not just making it that $12,000 flat amount, that it could increase to $18,000. And we haven't received a lot of guidance on what does that look like for us? And so I'm hesitant to say here's where our revenue's going to land because I have all of these concerns and I haven't been able to get something definitive on here's exactly what this means to Eau Claire. So let's talk about expenses because I'm feeling pretty good about that. And so I just wanted to share with the board where we're at today, our operating budget which is our general fund and our special education fund. We ended the year last year at $135,298,048 and that's what we actually spent. And our current projected budget is $138,685,469. That's an increase of about 3.3 million or a percentage increase of about 2.5%. Doesn't seem like a big percent, but it looks like a lot of dollars when you're looking at it. Let's talk about the referendum. Last year our spending was up a lot because we passed a referendum and so we are very grateful to our community for that. And so when we were working through the referendum and talking about those key items that we were going to spend our money on, here's how it broke down last year. To get to that new compensation model, I think we had estimated it would be about $3.5 million. When we were all done, it was about $4.6 million to get people from old to new. We didn't have any class size adjustments in 1617 because the referendum wasn't passed at the time we did staffing. When we talk about technology and safety and security, last year we spent about $246,000 on those projects. And then we used the balance of the referendum last year for operational costs and that was about $953,000. In the 1718 budget, for regular salary and fringes, we anticipate $800,000 from referendum going to that. Class size reductions, we've spent about $1.8 million on that and that was part of the referendum. That's an additional 24 staff between teachers and aides in classrooms. And I think that's important because that is showing that we are meeting that goal and what we had identified within the referendum. When we talk about technology and safety and security, we plan to spend approximately $707,000 this year. And then we won't have any additional cost for operations because the balance of the referendum this year will be for our debt payment that we issued. The debt was issued in April and we had set aside funds, we thought approximately about $2.2 million for payments. And the payments do range every year and so 2.5 is our first payment on the debt. If we look at the referendum projects, Larry just did his presentation, so this is exactly the same slide that he just showed you of the projects that were completed with the 1617 referendum. And so we're still working on some of those. But again, that money is being used wisely and I'm anticipating a question of, well, why isn't this part of the referendum money? That's because we issued debt for $25 million to take care of that deferred maintenance so that way then we could get it done quicker instead of having to spread it out over the 15 years that we have the referendum for. So salaries and benefits, now these are, this is under strategic priority number four for high-quality staff. And so this schedule shows all of the salaries and benefits for our operating funds. So it's regular salaries, it's coaching, it's increments, request for additional time. And so you can see between salaries and benefits this year, that's about an increased cost over last year of almost $5 million. In benefits, the things that are there would be the increase in health insurance cost. I think it was about 5.5% this year from last year. Our OPEB costs are included in there. Anytime you pay people more, there's additional retirement and additional social security as well. So that's going to account for most of that $1.6 million changes in benefits. I jumped ahead a slide, so just a reminder, oh, the other thing that was included that I didn't talk about is the CPI increase is almost a million dollars of that total increase. The CPI increase for 1718 that was placed on the salary schedule with salaries and fringes is $923,000. And so that's also factored into that number that was on the page before. Dental insurance costs stayed the same, so there is no increase to the district for that. The other thing that was important that we wanted to share with the board is that vision insurance was offered to all employees this year and that was at no cost to the district. The employee has the option to take it and they would pay for that benefit. And so that was something new that we added and we thought that was something really good for our employees. And then again, OPEB is included in those costs. If we look at purchased services and again, it might seem a little odd that purchased services is tied to our high-quality staff, but it is tied to our high-quality staff because we have a lot of staff development costs that are included in purchased services. So when we're doing additional trainings and sending our people off to learn more, a lot of that cost is going to fall under there. Now you'll notice right now, today we're about $882,000 less than where we were at the end of last year. I think that our biggest differences really come from the fact that we are missing that open enrollment piece for the vouchers. And so we won't get that added into our budget until we get that final amount from DPI. Again, last year it was over $500,000, so I would anticipate that number being different this year. The other things that fall under purchased services would be operational costs. And so that would be transportation, our water, our electric, our utility bills, a lot of things that we just don't have control over. And so that's why we added operations up there because a lot of our operational costs will fall under that purchased services category as well.
Can I ask a question?
Oh. I'm so engrossed. Commissioner Duhak, sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to ask you, do you have the number for OPEB? What we paid into OPEB?
For 1617? Yes. I think our final expense was about $5.9 million, the greatest under $6 million for last year. If we talk about supplies, that really goes under strategic priority number one and number two, which is academic achievement and social and emotional growth. And that might seem a little bit interesting, but those are the things that we need to provide items for our students. And so you can see that that estimate is up $368,000. One of the big things that's in there is our general supply budget is up. And a lot of it, if we look at what's going on at our school buildings, between the two high schools, our FCE sections are up 15 sections from last year to this year in that program. And so obviously because that's a very consumable supply, their cooking, their baking, sewing. And so those costs are up this year and that's in addition to running more sections for those. Project Lead the Way is also up three sections between the two high schools and that's again another class that you need a lot of tangible items and supplies are very expensive for those classes. So that's another reason that, that the difference is $368,000 is where we're at today. Don't think there was anything else unusual within the supplies category as well. When we talk about capital objects, those are things that cost individually over $5,000 an item. And so again, could be attributed to academic achievement, student social and emotional growth and collaborative cultures. We had to buy some new equipment this year to run transcripted courses through CVTC. So we've purchased a couple of band saws and table saws. The other big change that's in here is last year we had a lot of our fiber and switches that were purchased for our tech project. And so a lot of that decrease of $800,000 is also related to those big projects that we had last year that we finished, that we don't anticipate those costs again this year. Let's talk about debt retirement. This is really the interest costs that we pay on our short-term cash flow borrowing. And we have to cash flow borrow every year in November because of the fact that there's a delay in our timing and receiving of payments between our state aid and needing to pay bills and when we get our first property tax payment. And so we typically run into a cash flow problem in mid to end of November. And so last year the interest rates had started to creep up a little bit and so we didn't get as great of an interest rate. We still got a good one, but as, as the market is coming back, we anticipate those costs to go up again this year. And so that's why there's about a $10,000 difference in that line item budget. Insurance, as I had mentioned before, this is our property insurance, our liability insurance. And so we are very excited this year because that number is negative and our insurance premiums went down $140,000. That's due to workers' comp. We've been working really hard to get that workers' comp down. We had a couple of bad years. And so in 2012, I think it was, we implemented a new program with Real Living and Trifecta and NEAP. And so we had a really high year that was 12, 13 that dropped off this year. And now our years, our claims ratio has been much lower. And I know a lot of it's attributed to changing that program and looking at the way that we're doing things. And so we finally see it come to fruition. They said it would take about three years and so this year we're reaping that big benefits and we're very excited about that. And then other objects. Other objects, again, like I talked about earlier, it's student entry fees for athletic competitions or for, you know, co-curricular things, there's district dues and fees. And you can see that that estimate is down about $105,000 for this year. We had a couple of one-time expenses in 201617 that we don't anticipate happening in 201718. And the other big piece has to do with the change in the special needs vouchers. We used to get paid from other districts and then we'd have to transit aid back to them because we would get the categorical aid. And so now with those special needs vouchers, we don't have to transmit that aid back to the districts any longer. And so we did in 1617, but now we don't have to do that any longer in 1718. And so that's a big part of why that $105,000 is down. So I didn't want there to be an assumption that we're making cuts, it's just the types of expenses that run through that category. Then we had a lot of items that were requested that haven't been approved and I thought it was important for the board to realize this because even though we had a successful referendum last year, those costs were earmarked for certain things within that referendum. And so some of the things that have been requested and we know our priorities for the district, but at this point we're not sure that we'll be able to fund them, would be a big chunk is technology. You can see that there's a request for HP streams to be expanded, iPad expansion and replacement and refreshment. Our iPads are kind of getting to the end of their useful life. And so that's a big expense for the district. Some document cameras that were requested, additional time, additional time to pay staff people to do things outside of their work hours and how can we incorporate that better into our daily operations? Staff development, we're always looking at those costs and how do they impact our budget? And so we've already identified $187,000 that we won't be able to do this year. And then even in the buildings and grounds, we were able to replace some tractors and mowers last spring, so we were able to reduce the budget for this year. And so that's why they're listed on there as well. So in conclusion, it's been a challenging year just because we don't have a state budget yet and, well, I guess we do now officially. We just don't know exactly what that's going to mean to us. We've been operating and putting our budget together assuming a flat increase. I know our aid estimate from July 1st was up about $300,000 and that's because we had more kids last year. And so we've been being very modest when we've been putting our budget together because we are very concerned about how everything's going to end up and we're very concerned about how those vouchers are going to impact us and the tax levy for 1718. Next steps would be that DPI will certify our aid number to us on October 15th. And then we will be able to put everything together and provide the big budget binder and have a formal budget hearing before the end of October. So any questions for me?
I do not see any, so, and, oh, Commissioner Harder.
I have a question. I didn't see this presentation, I don't know if maybe it was a little late coming, I didn't see it in the, in the materials, could we get a copy of it?
Yes, we'll get it into Boardex tomorrow.
Thanks Abby.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, thanks Abby. We will move on to discussion and possible first reading of Policy 341.1 Human Growth and Development. This is one that's been worked on in policy and governance. We'd like to read it through tonight, get a reaction from the board and pass it on for passage next time if we don't get any other feedback, okay?
This was date flagged by Wasby, that's why we're bringing it, just needed to be
Okay, I think we started on this end the last time. Read through a couple paragraphs, pass it on to someone next you, so should we start on this end this time? pass it on to someone next to you, so should we start on this end this time? Commissioner Vu, do you want to start, pass it down, what do you want to do? Okay, thanks. Why don't you read the first two paragraphs and pass it on to Commissioner Torres and then on to Commissioner Dux, okay? Thank you.
Human Growth and Development. Instruction in Human Growth and Development may be provided in grades K-2 through all. If provided, the program shall offer information and instruction appropriate to each grade level and the age and level of maturity of students. Enact curriculum shall be supported by both state and national standards. No student shall be required to participate in Human Growth and Development instruction as cited in Wisconsin statutes. A student's parent or guardian shall submit a written request for the student to be exempt. The teacher or school principal shall be notified prior to the start of the units of instruction. Pass.
Students exempted from part or all of the Human Growth and Development units of instruction will be assigned alternative learning experiences of equivalent time duration and credit value. The exempted student will not be penalized in any way or manner, including receiving a lower grade in the class that contained the exempted units of instruction. The Director of Academic Services or his or her administrative level designee is responsible for ensuring that the district provides the state mandated annual notices regarding this instructional program to parents and guardians. Such notices shall include appropriate information about student exception procedures.
Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee, the Director of Academic Services or in his/her absence a school principal designated by the superintendent shall serve as the chairperson of the district's advisory committee on the Human Growth and Development curriculum. As established by state law, the role of the committee is to advise the school board and administration on the design and implementation of the applicable curriculum and to periodically review the curriculum on an advisory basis.
Questions from the board?
How are...
Commissioner Dux?
How are parents notified of the curriculum?
I think that goes out on a yearly basis as we discussed it as part of our committee. Yep, any, Dave, do you want to confirm that?
About the notification for families for the Human Growth and Development curriculum?
There's communication that goes out to families when their student is enrolled in the course specifically, then we also have the curriculum available in the Academic Services website so you can access it there, we're in the process of updating that, making it have much more user-friendly so folks can negotiate the website easier, it's part of our reform in teaching.
Thank you, thank, any other questions? Commissioner Torres, you have your light on, do you have a question? I used, okay, that's okay, I used to do that too, but I have to ask. Commissioner Vu? Your light's on too? Boy.
We're the readers.
Anyone from the audience have any questions? Any input? Seeing none, I'll go on to the request for future agenda items and then we'll move that on to be voted on next meeting. Any future agenda items from board members, students? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Luganbill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vu, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.